Yeah.
Yeah, there he is, there he is.
I'm gonna start the recording.
Grand entrance.
Uh, yeah. The meeting will come to order, please call and roll.
Deputy Mayor Pelosi?
Here.
Councilwoman Biden?
Here.
Councilwoman Brown?
Here.
Councilwoman DeCoursey?
Here.
Councilwoman Holman?
Here.
Councilwoman Trump Manuel?
Here.
Councilwoman Wells?
Here.
Okay. Are there any announcements, reports, and/or presentations by the council? Alright, hearing none. We'll go into item 3A, second quarter financial. We have the Director of Finance approaching the diet there.
Hello, council, thank you, I am Jamie Thomas, I'm the finance director, and I was going to go over the second quarter of financial report and just give a, try to stick high-level overview where we're at year-to-date, actuals versus budget. So this first slide is, um, just to kind of show you briefly summarized version of what we've collected year-to-date in revenues compared to our budget, compared to what we've spent year-to-date compared to what we've budgeted. Um, we've spent thirty-five point one million dollars year-to-date, which is actually three million dollars under what our budgeted amount was, and we've collected thirty-seven point nine million dollars, which is one point one million dollars more than we had anticipated year-to-date. This slide is a breakdown of the expenditures by department and how that thirty-five point one million dollars year-to-date has been spent. Uh, the biggest, so there's obviously a large variance between department to department. There's one department that makes up a lion's share, which is public safety, I'm sure you guys are used to seeing that. As far as the underspend, the three million dollars that we've underspent year-to-date in expenditures, there's really three departments that are contributing to that, and that is community development, which they're twenty-five percent under their budget, police, which is three and a half percent under their budget, uh, but because they make up such a large portion of the total dollar amount, three and a half percent is, um, significant, and then non-departmental. So both for community development and police, this is just attributed to salary and benefit savings. The non-departmental savings is mostly attributed to debt service that we haven't yet paid on our cemetery and golf course principal and interest payments for outstanding bonds.
What do you attribute the under, um, expenditure in community development? Are we saving that money for a project that's coming up or something?
Uh, no, it's same thing as police, it's, um, unfilled positions or just attrition, so salary, salary and benefit savings for positions that are currently.
Thank you.
Then with that, oh, I jumped ahead, so with that, uh, that was gonna be all I spent on the expenditure side, since it's really the rev, we, we do a good, better job of staying within the parameters, parameters of expenditure budget, we have control over that, it's the revenues sometimes that we don't have as much control as far as what's coming in, so I was gonna spend more time going over the different revenue sources. Um, this slide, the general fund revenues, um, by type, it's just the major categories. And, um, looking at this, this is, so this is a breakdown of the thirty-seven point nine million dollars that we've received so far year-to-date. Um, the biggest contributors to the one point one million dollars extra, uh, more than we had anticipated, is coming from our culture and recreation fees, other fees and charges, um, which is attributed to development service fees and public safety fees, and then other revenue, which is interest earnings and facility rentals. And I'll talk more in detail about this, well, we have more detailed slides for charts on those, on those revenue sources, I'll talk about that a little bit later. Starting off with property taxes, this is of course, so just talking about general fund revenue right now, of course, property taxes is the general fund's largest revenue source with twenty-one point six million dollars budgeted for twenty nineteen, which makes up twenty-nine percent of the general fund budget. We're right on track with what we've levied for property taxes in twenty, in twenty nineteen, and we're expected to meet our projections, um, through the end of the year. Sales and use tax is our second largest revenue source, um, we budgeted eighteen point four million dollars in the general fund in twenty nineteen, we are at, which accounts for twenty-five percent of the general fund, general fund revenue. And we're a little bit ahead of budget by eighty-one thousand dollars compare, or, um, we're ahead of twenty eighteen by eighty-one thousand, and, um, we're actually just a little bit under our budget projections for twenty nineteen. Um, what's pushing us ahead compared to twenty eighteen is retails and service, the retail and services sector. In total, we're two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars ahead between those two sectors. However, that's actually offset by, um, a decline in both the autom, automotive sector and the construction sector. And I'm not sure, um, if this has been highlighted in, in the first quarter budget adjustment, but I did wanna call out that if you look at the twenty eighteen total sales and use tax that we collected was fifteen point nine million dollars, we're budgeting eighteen point four million dollars for twenty nineteen, and that is attributed to the fact that we pulled in all the construction sales tax into the general fund for twenty nineteen. In future, or in prior years, it had always been, it had gone to the streets funds for construction. Utility tax makes up for fourteen percent of the general fund budget, or nine point nine million dollars, this is our city utility taxes, our electric, natural gas, telephone tax. Right now, we're trending below our year-to-date budget projections, um, by a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars, um, mostly attributed to telephone tax, but then just with the cyclical nature with utility taxes, particularly natural gas and electric, there does tend to be fluctuation throughout the year, so we'll just keep our eye on this, if there needs to be any adjustments, um, as we get into twenty twenty, we'll relook at those utility taxes, but for now, um, a hundred-and-ninety thousand isn't too significant, and we expect to see those fluctuations throughout the year. Cable franchise fees, we've budgeted nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the year, which actually is only one percent of the general fund budget, and we're just trending, just a little bit lower year-to-date than what we would have expected with our year-to-date budget. Um, we've, um, collected four-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars year-to-date. Cable utility tax, we have, um, a million dollars budgeted for this tax specifically, which is one percent of the general fund revenue, also slightly lower, um, but again, it's pretty marginal, insignificant, we'll watch it through year-end, but, um, nothing that would have a huge impact on the general fund at this point. Business licenses actually account for, um, less than one percent of the general fund revenue. Um, we have two-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars budgeted for twenty nineteen, we've collected a hundred-and-ten thousand dollars year-to-date. As you can see in the, the year-to-year chart, there's a lot of, um, variance in what we've collected, a lot of that just has to do with the timing of when we collect our business license revenue from year-to-year. We, it, we expect to meet our budget of two-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars, if not exceed by the end of the year, as we get our year-end renewals, will start coming in towards the end of the year, and we'll, we're confident that we'll meet our projections there. Building permits, uh, we've budgeted one point one million dollars in building permits for twenty nineteen, which is one point four percent of the general fund budget. A little, we're a little bit lower than our year-to-date projections by a hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars, um, which is kind of interesting, we have a slight increase, two-point-seven percent in total building permit activity through, through June thirty, but the, just the total value of those permits is lower than it was in twenty eighteen. Major projects that have attributed to what we have collected, to the, uh, to the, the money that we have collected in twenty nineteen, is attributed mostly to Auburn Heights Elementary and the Dix Scobie Elementary permits. So intergovernmental revenues, um, is, uh, several different items, um, it accounts for five-point-eight million dollars of our general fund budget, or eight percent of the budget. Um, the major revenue source streams that go into the intergovernmental revenues is our state, our state shared sales tax, um, which also includes the sales tax mitigation revenue that we're currently receiving, um, grants and as well as the Muckleshoot Tribe compact revenue. Um, to date, we've collected two-point-nine million dollars, and we're right on target to meet our, our year-end budget projections, so there's not anything there, um, to anything notable there.
Would you, oh. Could you explain a little bit about the Muckleshoot engine, and the, excuse me, uh, compact?
Um, I have, I don't have a whole lot of, is there something specific that you wanted to know about?
I just, I just wanted to know more about that specific, um.
The contract? I, I unfortunately don't have a lot of information on the actual contract itself, um, I know that it is negotiated, um, manually, um, if there was, I can, would you, is that a report back that you would like?
Would you, yes, I would really like to know a little bit about that.
Yeah, if you could, uh, give all council the same information, please? That you derive for council members?
Yeah, of course, and I was just curious, is this a report back that you would like to the, at a study session at a later date?
No, if you could just get a report, like, just to read.
Just a high-level summary of.
Yeah, just a pa, white paper?
Yep, I can do that.
Thank you.
So going into charges for services, we have six-point-six million dollars budgeted for twenty nineteen, which is nine percent of the general fund budget, and, again, this is another category that has several different revenue streams that, um, roll up into the charges for services category. We're currently three-hundred-and-forty-three thousand dollars ahead of the year-to-date budget, which I had mentioned earlier, this is one of those, um, revenue, uh, revenue sources that I had mentioned in the very beginning that we were ahead of budget by. In charges for services, you'll see the development service fees, public safety charges, um, culture and recreation, general government fees, and in these next slides, I'll go into more detail about where those increases in charges for services are. So development service fees, we have collected sixty-two thousand dollars, we're sixty-two thousand dollars ahead of the budget, and with thirty-eight thousand dollars over twenty eighteen, and in this area, it's attributed solely, almost exclusively, to the plant-checking fees. Culture and recreation, this was another revenue source that we had identified in the first couple of slides, being over our year-to-date budget. In total, we have two-point-four million dollars budgeted, and, which makes up three percent of the general fund revenue. We've collected one point four million, um, which is sixty thousand dollars over twenty eighteen year-to-date, and a hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand over our budget year-to-date, and this is, uh, due to increased green fees at the golf course and Auburn Avenue ticket theater sales. Fines and penalties makes up a hundred, eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars of our general fund budget, or one percent of the total budget. We're slightly below thirteen thousand dollars year-to-date. Um, we've actually seen a slight inti, uptick in our civil penalties related, um, to code compliance, so we've, we've, um, we see, I think it's like fifty, we're fifty-seven thousand dollars ahead of budget on that, but it's offset by reductions in other, in other areas and other fines and penalties. Miscellaneous revenue, we, is, we budget one point six million dollars a year, um, which is another, uh, revenue source that includes several different revenue types, and it makes up for two percent of the general fund budget, um, we're actually trending quite a bit ahead at two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars above the year-to-date budget, and, um, a hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars over the two-thousand-and-eighteen year-to-date. This is really related to two sources, which is interest earnings, we're sixty-three thousand dollars, um, over our budget projections, this, we just try to be conservative year-to-year on our interest earnings, because they've been historically low, and so, any extra interest that we can get on our investments, that's great. And then we are also over on our facility, our facility rental revenue, um, by sixty-five thousand dollars, and a lot of this is just due to timing of receipt, and the timing of when we receive that revenue and when we recognize that revenue, but we did also have an increased participation rate at the farmer's market this year, which is playing into that, um, that additional revenue as well. So that was the general fund, so we're moving from the general fund to some of our other, our other significant revenue sources and some of our other funds, transition to our real estate excise tax. Uh, we have collected, um, two million dollars year-to-date, we have two-point-five million dollars budgeted for REITs, so we're actually ahead of our, our year-to-date budget, and real estate excise tax is one of those revenue streams that is just all over the place, it's really hard to tell exactly, um, when sales are gonna occur of large buildings, which is what drives, um, the actual revenue of the significant amounts of real estate excise tax collected. This year in twenty nineteen, we've had a couple of large commercial building sales, we've had a couple of multifamily, um, housing unit sales, as well as, um, several small-to-mid-size retail space sales, which is driving our higher-than-anticipated REIT collections. This next slide is just to show where we're trending with total pet licenses sold, and the total revenue collected on those pet licenses, we've sold a hundred-and-sixty-five more licenses this year than we did last year at this time, and that has resulted in an extra five thousand dollars in revenue.
Oh, you, you're sitting on that board, are you not?
I am, I've been to one meeting.
One meeting?
Yes.
Good. You know, it might be something to look at for future council study sessions, and that is have them come and give a report, an internal report, uh, covering finances and everything, uh, number of employees that they have, number of volunteers that they have.
Just kind of like a, a snapshot of everything that they're doing and how things are going?
Thank you.
Moving into, uh, some of our capital project funds, this is our street fund, so we have three capital project funds dedicated to streets, they roll up into one for reporting purposes. The first one is the Fund 102, which is our, our, our arterial street fund. Um, the main sources into this fund are transfers from other funds, um, the motor vehicle excise tax and federal grants. Our federal, uh, the capital spending is down, as you can see from this, this graph, based on our year-to-date budgeted amount, but we expect, it just has to do with the timing of projects, when projects are near completion, as well as when we're getting ready to plan and put new projects up to bid, so not unexpected to see this variance. The next fund, Fund 103, is the local street capital project fund, which is primarily funded with REIT, which is the real estate excise tax that we just looked at a couple of slides ago, and most of the projects in this fund are extremely weather-dependent, it's, um, patch overlay and street reconstruction, so a lot of those projects can only be done a certain time of the year, so through second quarter, not a lot of those projects have really kicked into gear yet, and we, again, we expect to see the underspend in this fund as well. Then the third street fund is the arterial street preservation, it's primarily funded with our city utility tax revenue, and similar to the Fund 103, those projects, it's, this is a lot of street overlay, patching, and those projects are weather-dependent, which is why you see, it looks like we've underspent our capital budget year-to-date, that just has to do with the timing and the weather permitting of projects.
Where, where are we at, uh, with, um, getting those streets done? Where, how many more projects do we have?
I'm going to, uh, hand it over to the street expert.
So I'm not certain I understand the question, are you asking how many more streets do we have to do in our entire system, or are you talking about the?
Up to the end of the year.
So the local street reconstruction project, we are working on one site, we have a second site that they will need to start on, uh, that I believe they intend to start, uh, a little later this month, in that second location.
So are we ahead, uh, with our timeframe with all the streets that we have had on the?
So for the reconstruction projects, they are weather-dependent and weather-sensitive, so as we get into the wetter months, that will, um, impact what the schedule of the projects are, which is why sometimes these projects carry over into the next year for us to actually finish up the paving work, which is what you'll likely see with the local street project this year.
Okay, 'cause from what I have seen out there, um, I really like to see some of those sea, streets already being done, and I've been hearing back from the people that live in that area that, you know, they're really happy to see it happen, so I was just kinda curious seeing where we're at right now, so thank you.
I, I have a question, probably for Ingrid, uh, the manhole covers, I understand we have, is that a capital project?
That is a capital project.
Uh, is that underway now?
I believe we just awarded that about a week or so ago.
So, how long will that take to fix?
Um, I, yeah, I would have to go look at the schedule, but typically those, that type of project will move fairly quickly once they get started with the construction and be done within a month to two months.
You know, we still have, uh, some real bad ones out there, I was wondering how you guys prioritize those.
Yeah, so we prioritize those based upon input from our maintenance staff, where they're seeing problems, where they have to go back and continuously deal with potholes around the manholes, or where they're having issues with the lids themselves, uh, and so we prioritize how we go about replacing them based upon that need for that constant repair.
Uh, you might wanna look at one bad one, that I drive every day, that I see on a hundred-and-fifth southeast going up Lee Hill, up to Lee, from Porter Bridge.
Okay.
It would be on the left lane going up, I mean, it's really, uh, it's, it's sunk, you know, part of it has sunk and.
Okay, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Look at that, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna move into our enterprise fund, so our water sewer, uh, storm and garbage funds, away from our governmental funds. Um, this chart just really shows our water consumption and our water sales compared from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, and there is an interesting uptick in April and May in total water consumption, um, but despite that, and actually, the consumption was up in all categories except schools and wholesale, so it was an interesting uptick. Um, overall, the water consumption has been on a decline for several years, just with conservation efforts and energy-efficient appliances, but it's interesting, I, we'll keep our eye on that, and maybe it was just, we had maybe a drier than normal spring, we'll see what happens. These charts show the total diversion by customer category, so we've got residential customer, multifamily, and commercial waste customers for solid waste, and how much of that waste, um, was diverted to, um, using yard waste and recycling, and looking at the residential, you can see that almost fifty percent of the garbage was diverted to, um, yard waste and recycling, but a very large portion of that was actually for yard waste, so they seem like they're, um, there's a lot of diversion for residential, but really that has to do, is attributed to their yard waste. When it comes to recycling, residential, uh, accounts are just a little bit higher than the multifamily and the commercial, the commercial customer accounts. Seems to be a little bit of a delay in, in our computer tonight, or maybe it's just the battery going dead? So this next chart shows the total solid waste tonnage by customer type, um, of the almost twenty-thousand-dollar garb, or twenty-thousand garbage utility accounts, eighty-nine percent of them are residential accounts, but if you look at this chart, you can see only thirty-three percent of the actual solid waste tonnage is attributed to those, to those residential accounts, whereas seven-point-eight percent of the total accounts are commercial accounts, and they account for fifty-three percent of the total solid waste tonnage. The next chart shows the cemetery fund, uh, in total, operating income is up four-thousand dollars over two thousand and eight, this is due to a thirty-two thousand dollar increase in revenue this year over year-to-date twenty eighteen, which is offset by increase in expenditures of twenty-nine thousand dollars over twenty eighteen year-to-date. Last slide just shows, uh, a breakdown of our purchase orders versus our P-card transactions to show that we're continuing to use our P-cards to help maximize the rebates that we receive from US Bank Card Services. Our transactions as well as our rebates are right on track in twenty nineteen as they were in twenty eighteen, um, the twenty-six thousand dollars in incentives, rebate incentives that we received, that we've shown for twenty nineteen reflects just one quarter of rebates received so far, so, um, we're on, but we're on track with what we were receiving in twenty eighteen as well. That concludes my PowerPoint, is there, did you guys have any questions about the, the fin, the quarterly financial report?
Questions, council? Everybody, everybody's happy, you know, looking at the executive summary, it is a good report.
It is, yeah, right on track.
Yeah, right on track.
More money in and one out.
Yep, so we're, we're, we keep hiring more people to fill the, uh, void, so that's good, especially, uh, the, the police department.
Yes, green is always good, there wasn't any red.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job, good job. Hey, now, now, the meeting is gonna be turned over to Councilmember Claude DeCoursey, and he's, uh, the Chair of the Public Works and Community Development Items, and that will be through, through, uh, 4A through 4B.
Isn't easy, we'll make it easy.
We'll make it easy, okay, it's all yours, buddy. So let's start with our capital projects status report, Ryan?
Okay, good evening, council, for the record, my name is Ryan Von Drack, Capital and Construction Engineering Manager with the city, and to my left, we have Seth Wiggstrom, and he's a project manager. We're here to report on the status of the city's capital projects, as well as give the, um, report on the feature project that will be featured in the Fall Magazine, for the Auburn Magazine, so let's get into it. Uh, the Capo Project Group is currently working on thirty-six active projects, eighteen of those are in design, and eighteen are in construction, and the total value of those is approximately forty-nine million. Since the beginning of twenty nineteen, we've advertised sixteen projects for construction, and over the course of the next couple of months, this is the slow time of the year, but we are expected to actually advertise a couple more projects, and maybe even a third. Um, the two that we should be advertising here in the next couple of months, CP eighteen oh seven, which is the water meter vaults and lids replacement project, as well as the CP nineteen seventeen deduct meter replacement phase one project. The other project that may, um, go out to bid by the end of the year is the CP fourteen sixteen F Street Non-Motorized Improvements Project, which happens to be the feature capital project that Seth's gonna be reporting on. Um, just a side note, uh, Mr. Pelosi asked about that sewer manhole going up Lee Hill near one oh fifth, that is on our list to replace this year, so that will be done, I'll just let you know.
Yeah, yeah, I know that, but I was looking at it prioritizing it a little bit.
Oh, prioritizing, yeah, gotcha.
I mean, it's a deep.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I, okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
That being said, if you have any questions about the report at the end of the, um, presentation, um, That being said, if you have any questions about the report at the end of the presentation, starting on page 46 is the Capital Project Status Report. Seth?
So this is a project I've been working on for a while. It's the F Street Southeast Non-Motorized Improvement Project. This slide here shows a map of all the streets we're going to be working on with the project. The main purpose of this project is to connect, to improve the pedestrian and bike connection corridor between downtown Auburn, which is up there on the left, specifically the project ends at Auburn Station, and the left go campus over there on the bottom right. There's kind of two parts to this project. The first part, which is by far the bigger part, is shown in red here. I'll go over it on the next five slides, but that's a list of all the work we're doing. That I'll cover in detail. The second part of the project is somewhat smaller, because it basically involves more just painting the existing pavement. But we're doing bike improvements on all the streets, shown in orange. Okay, so then the next slide I'm going to show you will show the details of what we're doing at the intersection of Fourth and F, which is the top of the red line here. So on the left is what the intersection of Fourth and F Street looks like today. This is south of the intersection, looking north. On the right are the plans for the project. This is actually from the CAT, so these are actual plans for the project. So the plans for this intersection include... So we're actually going to eliminate the left turn lane here, and the reason we're doing that is because that'll give us more room to build, it's a, like wide, it's called a mixed-use trail on the right side of the road. It'll be basically a 12-foot wide sidewalk that you could use by bikes and pedestrians. And then we're also going to be redoing the ramps, and that's basically that the curb radius is bigger to help trucks get around the corner. This whole section of the street will have new pavement and new sidewalks. And you see the green crosswalk there? That's actually specifically a bike crosswalk. It's not for pedestrians. It's for the bikes that are going southbound down F Street. When the light turns green, they can actually cross the road there and get up onto the mixed-use trail. So this is moving south a bit. Still looking north, you can kind of see the intersection up there still. But this is the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Bridge, and actually the Wash, the Highway 18 Bridge is right here, too. And what we're doing here, similar things here, the mixed-use trail is still being on the left side. It's mostly 12 feet. It actually has to narrow to 10 feet right between the bridge piers here, just because there wasn't enough room to make it 12 feet. Then we'll be installing the new traffic island. It's shown in red there. That'll be around the existing bridge pier here. It'll be stamped asphalt. It'll look like brick, but it'll actually be asphalt stamped, look like brick, and painted red. And then there'll be new street lighting. You can kind of see them, they're the two little black dots on the left side. Those will be new street lights. So this is moving south a little bit more. You can see the Highway 18 Bridge up there, looking north. And the new improvements are shown on the right. This, those improvements actually apply to the next three blocks, basically between Fifth and H. The road's going to look fairly similar. So we're, what we're doing here is, there'll still be two driving lanes. It's kind of hard to see, but there's, on the left, there, that's actually a parking lane, so there'll be parking for these three blocks on the left side of the street, or I guess it'd be the west side of the street. New sidewalk on both sides. The other side will be the 12-foot mixed-use path that gets carried all the way down to Ninth Street. New curb and gutter. This section of the street currently doesn't have curb and gutter, so we're adding curb and gutter. New landscaping, which is all the areas shown in green, that's all new landscaping, essentially grass. The overhead utilities are going to be underground, so you can see some of the overhead power lines. We're actually working with PSC Comcast and CenturyLink to move all that underground. And then new street lighting again. There'll be new street lighting on the whole corridor. So at two of the intersections, specifically the intersection of Sixth and Fifth, and the picture here, I believe, is, that'd be Sixth Street, we're going to enhance them a little bit to make them safer for bikes and pedestrians. The enhancement includes the ball bouts, basically where the curb kind of sticks out into the road, and the purpose of that is to make the crosswalk shorter, so it's easier for bikes and pedestrians across the street. We're also going to raise the intersection. If you, on the top and the bottom of the intersection, you can see there's that great concrete with the little arrow. That's actually where the intersection gets raised up. I believe it's five inches. That'll, that basically helps pedestrian visibility, makes the intersection safer. And then we're going to install, you see them on the south side, there are two pedestrian signs with the flashing lights, so a pedestrian or a bike could hit those and the lights will flash and make it easier to cross. The next slide here, so this is at the very south end of the project, the intersection of Auburn Way and F. There's not too much to talk about here. We're rebuilding the pavement, new sidewalks on both sides. The mixed, this is the end of the mixed-use path that goes, it's on the right side there, and ends in the large curb ramp. But the intersection more or less will look the same as it does today, with the exception of the mixed-use path on that right side. So this slide shows all the utility improvements we're doing, mostly underground. So the purple is the storm drainage and the new street lights. Those will be on the whole corridor. The storm drainage is really just adding catch basins to match a new curb and gutter. There's a trunk line, a big storm trunk line that we're going to reuse, so we don't have to replace that. The green, so on the north side, basically under the Highway 18 and VNSF bridges, we're replacing the old sewer line. Same thing with the water up there on the north end. And then there's actually a little piece of water, kind of by the Auburn Way intersection, they're replacing. And then we're going to underground all the overhead power lines, which includes CenturyLink and Comcast between Fifth and Sixth, and that would be the red line shown here. So this map shows all the bike improvements we have planned for the project. The red line is the one we just went over, so I won't go over that in detail for this slide. So all these lines in orange, we're adding, they're shared use markings, typically people just call them sharos. But those will be added to all the streets shown in orange. The blue line here, which is, that'd be Main Street between F and Auburn Way, we're actually going to add dedicated bike lanes. It's kind of hard to see, but that this, it's a little cut out from the plan sheet that shows the bike lanes being added to both sides of the street. And then on the whole corridor, we're going to add wave fighting signs for bikes. This is just an example of what one's going to look like. Basically, just signs to help bikes get to downtown Lesgo. And we're also going to add inner urban trail to some of the signs, just because that's such a major bike destination. This is the last slide. It shows the schedule and the budget or the cost estimate. Essentially, right now, we're just finishing up the design and the right-of-way phase. The right-of-way phase is fairly minor. It's just buying two small portions of property to build some curb ramps and getting four temporary easements to construct the project. That should be done by the end of this year, and we plan to bid by the end of this year. That allows to start construction early next year, in the winter of 2020. It says construction should be finished by summer 2021. We're hoping to get it done sooner, but the undergrounding, the utility undergrounding portion of the project can sometimes drag out trying to coordinate with PSC and Comcast and CenturyLink. So we're being conservative with that date. At the bottom, the total estimated cost for this project is about $4.7 million, and it's being funded, it's about half-funded by federal FHWA grants, and the other half is from the city water sewer and street funds. That was the whole presentation. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Where else?
Where else in the city are we using mixed-use paths?
So we have, a good example would be on 277th Street on the south side, between Auburn Way North and then all the way to the City of Kent. We put in a mixed-use path on the south side of the roadway.
Do we have them anywhere else?
Lake Tubs Parkway would be another one.
Sure, okay.
Lake Tubs Parkway.
And C Street is another one, by the Safeway, on the west side of the street.
The Safeway Distribution Center, so between 15th Southwest and 41st Street.
My concern is, and I'm glad to see that there's someplace else, is when you do kind of different movement of people strategies, there has to be an educational component to bring people up to speed on how to use these mixed-use paths. But there should be no problem with people understanding what mixed-use paths are?
Thus far, I mean, we've had pretty good usage out of them, and people understanding what their, what their intent is for. A lot of times, they're on high-speed corridor, or higher-speed corridor locations, and people understand that they have this wide corridor that they can ride their bike on as well as walk. But we also put out literature that helps with that same situation.
And the idea is it's, it'll be 12 feet wide, so the idea is that's wide enough, so if there's a bike and pedestrian coming to each other, it's one that they can easily get, yeah, it's one that they can easily get around each other. Won't be a lot of conflicts, or won't be a lot of pinch points where they have to get forced into each other.
How did you collect the data to support the concept of there needing to be a bike areas on that configuration? How did you, how do you support the bike usage? Somebody counts? Bike users or?
It's, we're trying to be more of a bike-friendly city, and so anywhere where we can put in those improvements is not necessarily a count. It's more so that individuals like to go to specific entities that the city has, Lesgo Community Campus, and people use all different modes of transportation. I just think that with the many different ways that we can allow people to get to those facilities, the better. And so bike facilities are one. It's an up-and-coming, I mean, there's a lot of people that bike throughout this area, and so it's, it's an important feature to add to any project.
Councilor Boyle, then back to Councilor Boyle.
Yeah, I just want to express my appreciation for that. I've got three grandkids that live downtown, and, and they like to go to Lesgo, they like to go to the library, and it's, it's nice to see it's being made safer. So appreciate that.
I'd be interested in seeing a map or a composite of where we have them, so that we can see where we need to fill in and how they're kind of interconnected.
A map of where we have?
Bike.
Bike facilities?
Bike routes.
Bike routes?
Yes. And it could just be a simple map with a big purple line drawn here, here, here. It doesn't have to be anything elaborate. It does support the concept of safety, but more importantly, it supports the concept of healthy living and exercise and, you know, accessing some of the nice things that we have in Auburn. But it would be nice to see how far we are on that plan.
Could you go back to that one photo that you have the arrows going the opposite way? Yeah.
Was it, which photo?
And you had, you had kind of like a ball sticking out further back. That one right there. So how's that going to work with it being so narrow for the pedestrians to go across? Then you've got two cars coming, and then the bikes.
Oh, so the, uh...
That's my concern, because I drive F Street a lot. I use that to get around lots quicker when I want to get off Auburn Way South.
Yep.
And that's a very narrow road, even as you're going under the bridge. And I see that you've got those going on each side of the bridge.
So what, what was your question?
How, how, well, with the cars going the opposite way, and then you're going to have pedestrians, and then you're going to have people on bicycles, is that, is that going to be wide enough without any problems?
It should be, especially on the right side. That's, maybe this, maybe it's kind of hard to see the scale, but these, these ramps are a lot bigger than, like, the normal ramp you just see on most intersect, on most corners.
Okay.
So the idea is that, yeah, they should be big enough for both pedestrians.
And you need those big old round circles coming out that far out?
It gives an idea of, you know, it's like a road diet in some ways. It slows traffic down. That's why we're putting the raised intersection in, so traffic is going to be forced to go slower.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then you also have the pedestrian beacons, where when they need to cross, they hit the button, they see the lights.
Okay. Okay, now, now I can see the reasoning.
And the driving lanes stay the same with the whole intersection. Basically, the ball bout cuts into the parking lane, so, yeah.
It just appears narrower.
Yeah, it really did, so I'm going, hmm. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions on the project or the actual report? Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Facility Needs Assessment Master Plan. This is the initial briefing for the project.
All right. So I wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight to talk about this important project. For the record, my, my name is Matt Larson. I'm a senior project engineer here at the city. I've been tasked with, with managing this project, the Facility Needs Assessment and Master Plan project. You know, not just I personally, but the city as a whole doesn't have a lot of experience with these types of projects, and so we, we've hired on a consultant. And, and we've already started the process of obtaining information that we, that we need in order to start this, this project. So, which actually included a, kind of a marathon day today. We had, we started at 9:00 AM this morning and went through, and went through a lot of, a lot of different facilities and locations and, and learned a lot. So, so really, the purpose of this meeting is to do, really introduce you to, to our consultants and Makers, and, and really to provide an initial overview and approach that we're going to use to develop this, this study, basically. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to the specialists in this.
Can I get a high five?
Yeah.
I'm Julie Basik. Thanks for having us today. We are delighted to introduce the project to you and introduce ourselves. I'm also with Beth Betschelder. She is the Deputy Project Manager on the project, and we thought we'd tell you a little bit about Makers, talk about what the advantages of doing this kind of project are, our approach to it, and then answer any questions you have. And actually, I invite questions at any time. If you see something you're curious about, let me know. This is informal, just getting you comfortable with what we're about to embark on. So, Makers is a small women-owned business based in Seattle. It's been around since 1972, so I can't claim to have founded the firm, but I am one of the co-managing partners. We've got about 33 people, interdisciplinary architects, landscape architects, designers, and planners. And we do all kinds of planning, so traditional community planning, zoning, urban design, and street design for improvements, road diets, and plazas. In fact, Makers designed the Auburn City Hall Plaza remodel, and that was not my project, but another partner a few years back worked on that for you. But I lead the facilities planning team, and we are a nationwide practice that works entirely for local government and government agencies, helping them get a handle on their facilities portfolio and how to best make it work to serve their customers and support their mission. So that is the focus of my work. You have a dynamic team. We do employ men at Makers. It's not non-discriminatory in any way, but it happens that you have four fantastic women that are dedicated to this team, in addition to a number of support staff in the office. So myself and Beth are running the project. Cecilia was with us today, looking at the Justice Center. She's an architect and our technical lead. And then Erica is going to help us with engagement. And it should be noted that in the first phase of this project, for sure, this is really an internal city project. an internal city process. So when we say engagement, what we really mean is engaging with your departments and your staff to understand their facilities' needs, how they imagine growing and changing in the future, and coming up with some different ideas on how to meet those needs. Anybody questions about Makers, your team? Okay. So, why is Auburn embarking upon a study like this? Well, it is a very smart move, in my opinion. It's very easy to continually invest in the buildings as you hire new staff or as you need to do a new project to do business a different way. And it really makes sense every so often to take a step back and say, hey, are we throwing good money after bad here? Is this the right facility in the right place that we should be continually investing in? And maybe, in fact, it is, but maybe it's not. And it's smart to sit back and take a look across departments. That's the other thing. Most times, cities, police, they know what they need. Community development, they know what they need. Admin, they know what they need. And they rarely talk to each other about, hey, if we both need something and facilities' investments are expensive, maybe we ought to see how we can leverage those dollars. So that's what this is about. Auburn is in a situation where you're experiencing growth and change over time. You are anticipated to continue to grow for population. And with more community members, you're going to need more services. And you might need additional services than you have today. So this is about how to plan for that. We will note that several of your existing facilities have been identified and through our whirlwind tour today and last week, as we can tell that they're constrained and they're aging. Notably, your Justice Center, it's a really, really unique facility, but it's quite constrained. The Police Department facilities that we saw today, and I've been doing this for 20 years, I have to say they are notably packed in there. They are doing a wonderful job in very constrained spaces. And it's not just them, there's other folks that are experiencing that. Public Works is a specialty of ours and my team. We've done a lot of Public Works plans all over. And your Public Works facility looks like many that I've seen. It's often an unfunded, they're kind of the unsung heroes, unfunded, ignored aspect of what is really important about city services. So we're looking forward to helping with your yards and parks, yards as well. This also supports your comprehensive plan goals. So our goals for you are to make sure we identify all the needs through all the departments, so get them all in one place. Auburn is no different than many cities that we look at. Yeah, go ahead.
So you've talked about the Police Department?
Yep.
Parks and maintenance.
Yep.
What about, is this building included?
Yes, in fact, it is. And we have a slide on our scope right here. So what we try to do is identify some areas of focus, so we can't look in detail at everything. And so Justice Center and your own M facilities were identified as the most critical for us to take some time with and really dig in. However, we don't want to do that in a vacuum, so we're really looking at every facility that you have to identify future needs, opportunities. Maybe there's some underutilized space we can jump on, underutilized properties, et cetera. So that's our scope. Great question. It's about a quarter million square feet. Going to back up for a second. I was going to say, one of the great advantages of doing projects like this is it gets all of your information about your facilities in one place. So Auburn is just like many clients where you wouldn't believe, it's not that easy to say, hey, can you send me a list of facilities and some information about them and who's in them and what condition they're in? And you'd think that that would be there, but it's not. And it takes a minute to pull that together. And so the plan we produce will have that as the baseline. So we're going to consider all the plans of your departments. We're going to look, see if we can find any opportunities for collaboration, joint use. We are going to think about, you have a lot of funding priorities and some pretty significant funding constraints. So we're going to look at what are the options? How should we plan to phase investments in? And what is really our high priority here? So that's work moving into the later phases of the project. With an overall goal to have a compelling, achievable, and supportive plan. Seems like I'm spending a long time on this slide, but I'll just say one more thing. It does not do us any good to deliver you a, here's everything you need and it's, you know, $400 million and good luck with that. So we really try to work closely with all your departments and yourselves to say, hey, what is really, let's think outside the box, figure out the ways we can do creative things, but let's have a realistic strategy that we can implement. Okay, any questions about kind of our scope or our goals so far?
You said something that we really appreciate you saying, we just don't want you to hand us something and then we're going to be throwing money away. We can't afford that.
Yeah.
So I look forward to see what you have, you know, bringing to us. Because I know that our Police Department is neat, something big time. And so also so we can hire more police officers.
That's right.
And also our M and O, we know that they need it as well. So thank you for stepping up and look forward to seeing what you've got to offer us.
Okay, so how are we going to approach this effort? And thank you for saying that, I appreciate it. We're hoping to get you something that is strategic and prioritize how to manage deficiencies, is proactive. Here's the other thing, if you're constantly responding in a reactive way, oh, we've got a new partnership with King County for homeless services, where are we going to put them? You know, uh-oh, we got to hire five more officers and we're doing new kinds of police work that we need to emphasize. If you're constantly doing that, it's really hard to have a strategy and coherent investment plan. So we're trying to think forward as well as be transformative. So, you know, you have a big, beautiful customer service counter over there at the annex, but the reality is the traffic they see up there is maybe not the same as they used to. So you still need that, you still want to be welcoming, but, you know, should there be a better use of that space? That's one of many things we'll consider, thinking about the future. This is an important slide. It's important to state plainly what this study can do for you and what it can't do. So this is not a lean sigma six. I'm not going to come in and say you should contract out half of, you know, some operation. We're not looking at how you organize your city or how many staff you employ. We also, unfortunately, are not correcting today's maintenance headaches. So we're not going to fix the HVAC that's too cold or get somebody's light bulb to turn on when they want it. It's, if you've got to put a work order in, a maintenance work order, near-term maintenance plan, that's not what we're focused on. We're focused on long-term things that, investments that will improve your operational efficiency, help you define that strategy, and build support for funding. So we're, this is a strategic facilities plan, looking at all of your investments. Tracking with me? Okay. So there's some opportunities here that we see. Yes, you can plan to meet future needs, we've already covered that. You can also improve your workplace environment. So there are some lofty goals. Auburn's strategy is all over. I think it's so awesome. So while we're investing, how can facilities improve wellness? How can it improve sustainability, right? There's some real connections there that we can build on. We're hoping to reduce your maintenance and ownership burden in terms of cost over time. So often, these older facilities are money pits. They can really drag on, they can be very inefficient to operate and maintain, and to try to keep forcing them into supporting the workspaces you need can be very expensive over time. So we're hoping to save you some money there where we can. Add community amenities, if that's an opportunity, we're going to look at that. And looking at places that you want neighborhood growth or improvement and see if when you're investing in facilities, you can help bring that along. So a lot of opportunities here. It's a three-phase project. We anticipated it to take about over a year, so we won't be concluded and, excuse me, concluded until about October of next year. We're right in the middle of the kickoff and needs assessment phase one. The stars on top are where we anticipate checking back with you. So we've got five council updates and work sessions, if you will, throughout. And we plan to wrap up our kickoff and needs assessment in December, January timeframe, look at different alternatives and evaluate which way you want to go through the spring, and then wrap up the plan and concept and recommendations by next summer and into the fall. Here's a list of what you can anticipate us delivering at each phase. So first, phase one, you'll have a space needs assessment. So again, at a strategic level, how much space do your departments think they need? And how is that different than what they have today? Do they need more or less? And who is most in need of this more space? We'll have a visioning outcomes and a financial baseline assumptions. In phase two, we'll have a draft preferred direction, some cost estimates, and some different options in how you can implement it. And then phase three, we've got a fully developed recommendation and path forward as well as a phasing tool and flexible implementation approach.
So is one of your potential visioning outcomes or options looking at a one-campus operation for everything?
It could be. What do you think?
Well, I think as we continue to grow as a city, from their needs, we, and you will, break it down into what we need now, where are the short-term more needs, the longer-term needs, and then the ultimate need kind of out here as we continue to grow. And along each one of those phases, as we look at perhaps bringing on more staff, is what is the impact of that as well? And can that be absorbed or do we need to expand out even more?
Yeah.
And I know this is all just money raining from the sky, do all this, but I think you need to look at the ultimate vision and where we need to go as a city for the campus operation.
I appreciate that big-picture thinking. It is very easy to get daunted to try to understand where the money's going to come from. But the other thing about facilities that is really important to remember is an investment in a quality facility is 55 years. The skin, if you make it flexible inside, can last you 100 years. So it is, they are legacy investments and often will return efficiencies to you over time. Your question about, are we going to look at one campus? I think that's something that Auburn has flirted with over the years. It's been out there. I think it would probably be productive to take a look at it, analyze it. Maybe it makes sense, maybe it doesn't, we don't know. So not committing to doing it, because we'll see what comes out of the visioning process, but I think it's likely to be one of the things on the table. Anybody else want to throw any ideas in for consideration? Okay. So here's specifically what we'll be briefing you on. So we're here today, project initiation. You'll see us again end of the year or early next year on needs assessment. It depends how those holiday schedules and some of the other checkpoints with directors and staff go as we get there. But around that timeframe, in April, we'll be showing you how we evaluated the different alternatives we looked at and what's seeming to rise to the top. And then in June and September, we'll be refining our recommendations.
What cities are you using comparing to Auburn, you know, what they've done?
Yeah, so we have a whole working database of cities that are comparables. So we haven't picked out the ones in Auburn yet. I know, and it's usually that we'll pick out some comparable cities, but we'll probably target the department for each of them. So for example, today, we identified, I believe, Kent, Bellevue, and maybe Federalway for court examples. And that's complex because of the range ship with the relationship with the county, but we're trying to figure out they're very under, their space is tight as well. How much space do they really need? What are their options? And so those would be the front-running communities that we'll check out. Do you have any suggestions of comparable cities?
I come from the east side of the mountains.
Okay.
Walla Walla did a complete change as well. And they, the court ended up staying where the Police Department used to be, and all the judges are downstairs where all the detectives and everybody was. And they moved the Police Department out to the side on the other side of Second Street, and they built a complete new division for the Police Department. And also, they had M and O out there also because they had all of their vehicles and everything.
Right.
So that was one that I saw that they did a big change.
Super. We'll check them out. Anyone else been anywhere they think is a great example, something we should look at?
How about a caution?
Yes, please.
My experience in working with school districts that sometimes maintenance in operation are the last on the dream pad. And they do some of the hardest work and they get to see no realization. So I would really appreciate a plan that makes sure that everyone benefits.
You're here. Anyone else? Ideas or thoughts we should consider right away? Okay. So we heard from a team of leaders that Matt has pulled together as our kind of oversight group of staff, that these were their priorities. They would like to see that no matter what we do, it is something that there's a commitment by all parties, including the executives and council, to move forward. So it was an effort to say, hey, we're not, we don't necessarily want to advocate for one solution or another. What we want is something that will work and that can be used as guidance. They said that they'd like to be able to have this be forward-looking. So they want this to be legacy to support future generations and accommodate growth and change. And they'd like us to set the stage, so anticipating that facility investments are going to require council action to allocate budget. They may require additional revenue from some sources. So setting, being thoughtful and setting the stage and identifying ways that these investments and projects could build support in the community as a whole. So those were their very top line. Obviously, we had a long conversation and got a lot of ideas out of it, but those were the big-picture ones. Is there any other, does council have anything to add?
I have a question. We have a community theater. Would your planning take a look at opportunities for cultural facilities as well?
Do you believe there's a need for expanding those facilities?
Well, we believe there is, you know, challenges with the current theater.
Yes, yes.
So I think that this council will be looking at that in the future, yes.
Okay. Yes, so that's one of those that's on the list in terms of just your general portfolio. We have heard about the challenges with the existing facility, so it sounds like we need to have some, do some more discussion about that.
Sure.
I'd like to see the plan have a reasonable amount of time so that this isn't where we see some immediate, ongoing change and not something that goes on for 20 years.
Yeah.
When you start going beyond different administrative groups and council groups, you kind of lose some of your momentum. And I'm once again afraid that people like M and O end up with not getting a full deck of change, positive change.
Yeah. That's really important. I will say, just to manage expectations, that it is very difficult to come up with a strategy that addresses even your high-priority facilities issues. And this is just speaking typically, every situation is different. It's very difficult to get that all done in a short timeframe. But your point is very smart, and I think we have a number of strategies to start momentum, make sure it continues, and make sure, or do our best to make sure it withstands the test of changing executives, changing leadership at the city. So we try to do, have some immediate wins. We try to get things going early and commitments on the first steps as the highest priority, and then set up champions of the plan to make sure it's implemented over time. So we'll do our best on that. So we'll do our best on that.
Deputy Mayor Paul's?
One of the things that, that I have seen in my 16 years on the council is that consultants come in and they go blah, 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 and blah, 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 blah. And then we get a report. Oftentimes, those reports go on the shelf. So I think it's, consultants' objectives, one of the objectives would be that that does not occur.
I'm right there with you.
Looking at your question, what do customers believe would be the biggest win? I think as we go along, we can probably better define that. But what I'd like to see is what would it take to have a significant series of small wins? So we can get it up to the, again, I keep using the term ultimate, but we need to go way in the future with this, with this process. But at least being able to take care of the crunch and identifying what that is and how those small wins can lead us to the bigger win.
I want to add to that, again, that, that phrase, but I'd like it to sandwich in there the timeliness of it. Okay? We do a lot of planning in the school district, build the schools, and we have a five-year plan, and that seems to work.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want to see a 10, 15-year plan that just kind of fizzles. If we're going to do this, we need to step up and do it in a reasonable amount of time. So add timeliness to his wonderful comment.
I guess, hold on to the point. You know, I've had experience doing this with another agency where we purchased a building and actually didn't use part of the building because we didn't think we would have a need for it. Within a year, we outgrew that building and it took a few years, quite a few years more than that, but we had to purchase another facility. We moved some of the departments out to rented facilities for a time being, but finally got everybody together in, in one area. But it took a long time to do that. But I, I think in this process, again, is looking at the visioning of how we get to where we need to get in a short period of time without creating other constraints, you know, giving us that opportunity to have a, a place for a department to go if we need to, but giving it some sort of an expansion opportunity. So two or three years from now, we don't run into the same situation.
Yeah. Super smart. I can't tell you, as part of the job, which is a really fun aspect, is we get to tour all the new civic facilities that are built. Whenever we're out and about, that's part of what, you know, we learn about the best practices out there. And I can't tell you how many civic facilities I've been in that within three years, they are out of space. They don't have enough storage, they don't have enough meeting rooms because they're recapturing everything for staff, for staff growth. So yes, that is very important to be really forward-thinking, as expansive as you can be. I mean, if you think about what services Auburn provided and what its facilities look like, what its staffing levels look like 20 years ago, the change has been so dramatic. So yes, that's a, that's a really fun, creative part of the project and really important.
That's where Baggett.
Just to kind of key in a little bit on what Deputy Mayor Pelosi had mentioned, over the years, we've, we've had several consultants and, but we've also used a lot of our internal planners to come up with ideas for like Main Street. What is Main Street going to look like? Hopefully, you will be able to take advantage of some of those staff reports and, and the consultant reports.
Yes.
So that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. But at the same time, when we receive those reports, there was a price tag associated with them that we could not afford. And we have to be mindful of the expenses and how we can put that funding to work, like you said, with maybe additional revenues. We all know that there's going to be in the out years here, several revenue sources that are going to go away and dry up from both the county and the federal and the state.
Yeah.
So we have to be very mindful of how we're going to replace those sources of revenue in order to fund these kind of improvements. But at the same time, we can't put our head in the sand and say, we, we really do need to look to the future and see what this, this city is going to look like in 10, 15, 20 years. So we really need to be mindful of that. And you, you have to start early so you get a grip on it, but you need that master plan, which I'm sure that's what you're thinking of.
Yep.
I'm hoping that's what you're thinking of.
It is indeed.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Holman and Councilwoman Trump.
I really appreciate your third bullet up there, setting the stage for community support. Auburn is approximately 84,000 people right now. 20 years ago, it was probably 21, 22,000. That's an amazing amount of growth. We're growing at about 6,000 people a year. We're going to top 100,000 within five to six years. With that type of growth, the facilities we are thinking of really have to be generational. But to spend those sort of funds, it's more than what we have coming in. We're going to have to bond. And the only way we can do that is to get out and show that to our public in order to maintain the quality of life and the facilities and the public safety that we have in Auburn right now is community support, i.e. budget assistance. And the community has to be in on this from the very beginning.
Transparency.
Yeah.
Thank you for saying that, John, because I was looking at that as well because whenever we're talking about building and, and adding this and adding that, that's one of the biggest thing our constituents say. Where's the money coming from?
Yeah.
Where are we going to, where are we going to get that money from? What pocket and this and that? So it's nice that you've got the community support in there. And also, we don't want to wait, have you do the report and have it shelved for another 10 years or, you know, 15 years. Because I know our police department can't handle that. And, you know, neither are, several of our departments are, are needing this, but we also need to let the citizens be involved in this and we need to continue being transparent. So thank you for the work that you're doing.
My pleasure. One last slide here, our next steps. We did our whirlwind last week and this week, interviewed all your departments and looked at our facilities. We have a visioning workshop scheduled for late October, early November timeframe. We'll be issuing our space needs assessment. So what does Auburn need in terms of space in the future, later this year? And then briefing you on all the work we've done this fall, as I mentioned, in December or January. And that's all I have. Any final questions?
Julie, thank you very much. We definitely look forward to your future presentations.
Likewise. Thank you.
Okay, next is item 4C, State 18 Bridge Lighting Project at Auburn Way South. Mr. Tate?
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Council. For the record, Jeff Tate, Director of Community Development. And I'm going to be starting on page 58 of your packet. And of course, there's an agenda bill in here and a couple photos, and I think the photos probably tell a lot of the story. But I think that part of the backdrop, maybe that's important for why I'm in front of council tonight is, is to just gauge kind of a general reaction to an idea. This is, I think it's important to start by saying this is an idea that in terms of spending, is something that the department's budget can support through existing budgeted line item. And that it's an item that's probably with an administrative spending authority. But it's pretty significant in terms of what the impact would be or what the reaction would be if the city moved forward with a project like this. So the project would be to look at Auburn Way South and the SR 18 overpass or the, really, we're talking about the bridge or the tunnel of heading south on Auburn Way South underneath Highway 18 or heading north, either way. But it would be to put an aesthetic lighting treatment inside of that tunnel. That, that area or that idea actually was born out of driving down Meeker Street in Kent. And it's something that Kent did under state Route 167. And we reached out to Kent to find out what a project like that takes because it's actually a state-owned facility. It's not a city-owned facility. To do something inside the tunnel to, to add a splash of color, a little bit of interest along Auburn Way South, and as I've indicated in the, the agenda bill, that whether you're heading north or you're heading south, that, that bridge provides, it's a gateway monument. If you're heading up towards the plateau or if you're heading down, down the hill and north, it's really a gateway into downtown Auburn as well. So I really wanted to come to present the idea to council just to, just to gauge reaction. If we went forward with a project like this, which comes in a price tag of probably about $50,000, it's something that your constituents may ask you questions about, like, hey, what made you decide to go forward with a concept like that? And we don't want to move forward with, with an idea unless council has a certain comfort level with something like this because it would be new and unique for this city.
That's where Will's.
Eight years ago, Bill Pelosi and I were really concerned about the area there. We made some proposals to get the medians kind of cleaned up and looking nice because that is a gateway. You have got people stopping in three or four different directions that are going all those different places that you were talking about. It is not a huge area. It's an ugly area and this would be an opportunity to take something kind of ugly and make it a civic warmth and celebration. When I first saw this, I thought of all purple lights for Domestic Violence Month. I could see it for our parades, our patriotic red, white, and blue. I, I saw it as a way to build some cohesiveness as it relates to emotional-type things that we all celebrate together. I didn't see black and white lights for Halloween, though. I'm not a real Halloween fan. But I, I see it, and then I saw the price up there, these zero, zero, zero things always kind of get me a little edgy. But if it could be done within budget, because I, our last presenter talked about our significant financial limitations, but if it could be done with a scrap of here and a scrap there and whatever, I think that we would make a pig's ear into a silk purse right there. We put all of our major banners there. You know, it is, but it would be nice to do something that's kind of permanent and a little bit classy there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very supportive of this idea.
I know that during different things that happen in our community, you can see demonstrations of support. I mean, for example, I, I notice the green and blue, you know, Seahawks. If the Mariners are ever going to make it to World Series in our lifetimes, or, you know, orange and black for Halloween or...
Crimson and gray.
Crimson and, there you go, crimson and gray.
Oh, very good.
Purple.
Especially if you can change colors.
Well, I think it indicated that you can change colors, right?
Yes.
So I mean, I just think that there's some great opportunity. Have one side be crimson and gray, the other side purple and gold, you know? Always the diplomat there.
You know, we could go and turn off the purple and gold lights. No. What about the vandalism? Have they had any vandalism or anything in, in relationship to what they've done in Kent?
It's been about two months since I've talked to Kent and, about the project and their experience is only positive so far. So we ask questions like, you know, is it changing anything with respect to graffiti? Is it changing anything with respect to, you know, transient populations that, that sometimes utilize those areas? Are there, are, are people confused by it? You know, I mean, that's a question. It's something different. When you see something different, is it confusing? And they don't have any data or any experience to suggest that it, that there have been negative consequences, only positive. But it's been in place for about, it's approaching a year. So they don't have a ton of history with it, but they haven't, they, they did not report anything related to vandalism, that there was an uptick.
Well, on this, on this picture, it looks like it's got fencing all the way around it. So did that deter vandalism, people going in there and stuff like that?
It's currently not fenced.
Oh, okay.
So that photo, yeah, does show the fencing, but that's not their permanent setup. They've removed the fence.
You see, the council has a lot of opinions on colors.
Yeah.
The council around is comment, and your little comment here about the Mariners World Series, well, soon they'll, they'll be able to overcome the 21-1 losses and you probably have many, many years before you have to worry about putting fireworks in there for your World Series win. So, by that, I think we're supportive of what you're looking at here. You have other questions?
Just a quick one. Any possibility of drawing funds from the public art?
Yes. That is, that's an interesting question. I haven't asked the question internally yet, but technically, when you apply to the state for a permit to do this work, it is a public art installation. So it does fit into that category. That is something that we didn't, frankly, didn't spend a whole lot of time, you know, looking into funding.
Understood.
Anything like that, but we will. We didn't know how far to go with this idea if there was going to be a cool reception to it.
Brilliant, brilliant.
But we'll definitely look into those.
Councilwoman Will's?
I appreciate you kind of thinking outside the box and coming up with something different for a change. Thank you. You know, I mean, we're, we're always worried about the potholes and, you know, it's kind of nice to worry about. I, I see this as aesthetically beautiful and it's a center. We've got our flag, you know, that's just right around the corner. I mean, I just see this as building in that center and accentuating that, you know, railroad and that we are, that's us. So thank you.
I appreciate that, that thank you, but it, it's as creative as driving down Meeker Street and seeing what someone else did. So it's copying an idea.
Thank you for the extrapolation. Thank you.
Plagiarism is not, well, below us.
No, no, this is not disrespectful.
They paved the way. Kent did to, how to obtain a permit with the State Department of Transportation. It took them two years to obtain that permit. They now know how to do it.
Yeah.
And, and so there's a path to, to be able to do that a lot quicker now.
Two years. Thank you.
Let's go and take a quick five-minute break and then we'll be back with Jeff at the presentation.
Jeff and Mr. Holman.
There's a resolution in between.
Oh, God. Attification.
7:05. Seven oh five.
Oh, Jesus.
Behaving yourself?
No.
You having fun? Next month or two.
Of course.
I don't actually make her-
Being a part of that.
Hey, sweetie, how you doing?
We may want to know who are our potential tenants.
On a five-minute break with the City Council's study session. Could be home by eight. Just wanted to tell you that. Good stuff or bad stuff?
Down the road. Okay.
All right, we'll take a look at it.
All right, love you, kid. Bye-bye. Actually, I've got a motorcycle, you know, a Harley. It's got a chrome, pretty much chrome engine compartment. LEDs underneath.
Twelve fifteen hundred strikes in six hours.
Really, pretty attractive.
Yeah.
Take a look at doing that.
He's changing.
I've seen that before.
Started out a-
Out of plus. That's pretty neat on that.
You got these, uh, you know, motorcycle rallies and you'll have vendors there, and you just come in, you know, give them fifteen hundred bucks and they'll do it for you.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Direct TV and everything.
Taking a look at doing that.
It was for about less than, less than three minutes, but it-
Been a good summer.
Sitting there on the couch watching TV, kind of scared.
Oh, yeah. You know, I rebuilt my house, right?
It was really close, 'cause, you know, just like a light-
Really hard start to come together.
It's a, that's a stressful project to live in the middle of.
Yeah, and then, you know, uh, kind of went a little bit crazy on the budget, and so ended up with not enough money for landscaping, so it took me a little while to get that done.
Yeah, that was quite a schedule.
Well, uh, I don't know anybody who's done a remodel, who's ever said that-
Made it on the news, anyway.
I remember, so, so for us, it was a total tear-down, but what was really, one of, well, we did a few things. Walk-in tile shower that went over budget, and a couple other things, but, um, I remember distinctly, we're getting close to the end and we're getting ready to hang the lights, you know, and I upgraded some of the lights, and I kept showing Dawn of these lights. You know, normally, there could be some family at Grises during, you know, remodels or rebuilds, and, uh, I remember showing her these, like, you know, six hundred and fifty dollars per light fixture, you know? She started crying, you know? Okay, we don't have to go that expensive.
Yeah. That's, uh-
I think she saw our-
Fun and stressful all at the same time.
I think she saw our retirement being put way off in the future, but, uh, anyway, you guys were good to us. I mean, it wasn't cheap.
Yeah.
Permits and all that.
I was gonna tell you that Jeff did look at that. There's conflicting things.
But, you know, you live in a neighborhood.
In the study session, it says one thing.
How you doing, Bill?
Pretty good, man.
Okay. And so, I, I was going off of what it says, the council meetings.
Start filling out that suit a little bit more.
Thirty and fifty.
God, I hope-
Keep those suspenders on there.
I had to buy a couple, I bought a black pair and a brown pair.
Oh, Ingrid, how you doing?
Pretty much, but she still has her-
Yeah, sorry. I'm still hyped for jamming.
Well, she's up early, takes the boys.
Early, yes.
Ice cream ramen's coming up. I just walked around like this.
I'm gonna deal all the way around.
It is. Hey, man. How you doing?
Oh, I'm doing good, thank you. Doing good.
Okay, let's go and get started with seven oh six. And next, Mr. Tate will present us with item four D, resolution fifty-four fifty-four, order sixty-three seventy-two, hospital fourteen oh six.
Thank you. Uh, so back on July twenty-second, I was before, uh, council, it's study session introducing what HB fourteen oh six is. Uh, just as a quick reminder, that is an action that the state legislature took this past legislative session that authorizes cities and counties to recapture a portion of already-collected sales tax and keep it at home. Uh, keeping it home, um, comes with some strings attached, and that basically is that the money needs to be used for affordable housing initiatives. And there are some options within HB fourteen oh six that inform us what that is, whether that's building new housing, whether it is contributing to efforts to preserve existing affordable housing. Um, uh, so there's a, the HB fourteen oh six lays out what some of those options are. Um, I think I had described, uh, during that study session that the way the state law is set up is that it requires cities to act within the first six months of the legislation to adopt a resolution declaring intent to, uh, initiate HB fourteen oh six provisions. And that within an additional six months, or one year from the date of, of the effective date of the, the legislation, then take subsequent ordinance action, uh, that formalizes, goes beyond the declaration of intent, formalizes the provisions in city code to recapture that, that, uh, that money. Um, so what's in your packet, uh, is, uh, both the resolution and the ordinance. And, uh, if the city council is comfortable, if any city council or any legislative authority is comfortable, it can take both of those actions at the same time. Uh, one of the things that was important, uh, to have occur before Auburn City Council considered this is for the county to take action. By the county taking action first, this becomes a very complicated math formula, but suffice it to say that if the county takes action first, the capture within our region is more significant. The sales tax capture into King County is more significant. If cities take action first, it's less significant. So, King County has already taken action, so has Pierce County. Uh, in fact, uh, the city of Tacoma had taken action before Pierce County rolled it back so the county could take action, then took, retook its action. So, uh, it's newer legislation, so people are kind of figuring things out as they went, and I think that it's the consensus, the, the wise thing to do within each, uh, county is for the county to take action and cities to take action. So, um, the, the budget impact, uh, is estimated for Auburn to be about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars per year for twenty years. The legislation does have a sunset, uh, of twenty years, a twenty-year horizon. Uh, the sooner that a city takes action, the sooner that it can start, uh, collecting the revenue allowed under the legislation. So, um, I'll pause there. Uh, the recommendation from staff is for, uh, for, to dock it the item for city council action for both the resolution and the ordinance on Monday, September sixteen.
I think that's a wise idea. It doesn't cost our taxpayers anything, and it would be leaving money on the table for projects that we're already doing.
Ms. Royales?
This is one of the few items that has, has received press where I've had constituents come to me and say, can you explain this to me? And when I explain it to them, they kind of see this as a, you know, brainer. So, we would, if, if we follow your recommendation, we would do both an ordinance and a, a resolution and an ordinance. We wouldn't call it a res-ordinance?
Uh, no, I mean, that would make too much sense to do it all in one action.
Okay.
Uh, the way the legislation is written is that you really have to take one action and the next action, but it does not say that you can't do them both in the same evening.
There, there's some, um, some discussion about pooling some of this money with neighboring, um, cities. And I'm not sure if I'm really in support of that, but we could use this for housing repair supplement, the housing repair stuff that we use out of our block grant? If it, if it's affordable housing, maintaining affordable housing?
The, the, I won't say that you can't.
Yes.
What we have to ensure is that however that money is used, it is permanently tied to affordable housing.
Okay.
So, that could be. You could, uh, put that into the category of housing preservation, but what the Housing Home Repair Program does is it allows us to put money into a home to repair it.
Yeah.
And the person who lives in that home, they have to meet certain income qualifications, so it is lower-income or affordable housing, but they could, three years later, sell it, and now it's in market-rate housing. So, we'd have to be very careful about how we approached it to make sure it stayed in that, that category.
Can I interject something first here, just to, well, your question on pooling? The Affordable Housing Committee has had discussions with this, and I guess my question was gonna be, in doing the ordinance and resolution, is there any downside to doing both together in relation to what we talked about with Skip and, and the Affordable Housing Committee, I guess that in a second. Looking at it from the conversations we've already had, the idea of pooling was looking at to provide a greater leverage for the dollars we receive. So, you can't do a whole lot with a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, but when we, if we bring it into Skip, as an example, and all the eight cities are included with that, with all their funds, when we leverage that money, we have more buying power by doing that. So, that's a conversation that's on the table. There have been no conclusions related to that whatsoever, but just the, the suggestions of doing that. And King County is also looking at the cities finding ways to pool it together as well. There was one recommendation that was made at our last Affordable Housing Committee of having all the money pooled together and having the county distribute it out, which gives us a much larger opportunity to bond much more and bring more revenue in, but that didn't seem to garner a lot of support around the table, um, in the initial, um, suggestion for that. But those are kind of some of the things that we're going on right now.
Yeah, okay, so my question is, can you, um, can you accumulate it, or does it have to be spent within the year it's collected?
It does not have to be spent in the year that it's collected. You can accumulate money, you can bond against the money.
Okay.
Um, to, to Councilmember DeCoursey's point, uh, there are, has been some evaluation of what it would look like uh, if you had the nine-member cities in South King and the county, uh, pool, which would, uh, turn it into a million dollars a year, twenty million over twenty years. But we have stopped short in this legislation of asking this city council to, to, to include that in its recommendation. That's going to be an ongoing conversation about the benefits, the pros and cons of pooling, uh, whether it stays, and the other thing that I would say is, from a staff perspective, um, it's hard for me to envision a scenario where I would come to city council and make that recommendation if everybody wasn't pooling. It wouldn't be fair for Auburn to put money into Skip, but then the other eight cities not put their money into Skip. So, there's still many conversations about the pros and cons of that, but this does not bind the city council into that.
This is kind of on the topic, but not exactly. What I'm concerned about with pooling, and I know that it's not in the resolution or in the, um, ordinance, is that we are the South, and when things are pooled, they get centrally located, and, you know, sometimes our people don't have, they have to go elsewhere to get service.
That was kind of the, the gist around the table relating to the larger pool.
Yes.
And the example that was used was looking at Arjor on the east side, and how their member cities bring money into the organization, how it's distributed out within their region.
Yeah.
And Skip would do the same thing. As Jeff said, we have nine cities, I thought it was eight, we have nine cities, and, you know, we would focus the attention on this nine cities within the Skip South County area. The biggest question is, is does Bering get this first, does Auburn get this first? Those are the logistical things that would have to be figured out as we go deeper into this, but we're basically just right at square one right now, kind of figuring out, you know, when it comes in and, and what do we do when it starts coming in, kind of thing. And, and I, I agree, you know, looking again at, at your person, looking at your, your suggestion, without having to give it any additional substance related to the pooling, you mentioned that King County's already taken action, so it seems to make sense to do resolution ordinance at the same time. Any other questions? Councilmember?
Just one, um, so how are they gonna priori- prioritize this according to cities? Is it by needs or just-
It's based upon a sales tax rate. So, when you pay for a, a good in, in Washington State, you're paying sales tax on that. Uh, we would be capturing point zero zero seven three, seven-two percent of that sales tax. So, it's an estimate of what would come to Auburn based upon Auburn's sales tax proceeds.
Okay.
So, every city is gonna have a different number, not based upon need, just about. The theory is that, that, that while, yes, people come into Auburn from outside Auburn and buy goods, the theory in general is that the sales tax that is generated in this community gets to stay in this community, a little bit of it.
Could you provide us with that breakdown, though we've had, with the breakdown of what the different cities would receive?
Sure.
That would be very helpful, 'cause some cities are gonna get through pennies on the dollar. And, of course, the margin largest cities would get much more, but I think it'd be interesting to have us at least look at the distribution of what, uh, sales taxes would be.
Is that the one that you brought to our meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, like, just thinking of the Skip cities, like, Normandy Park gets about four thousand dollars. That's it, per year. Uh, the city of Renton, I think, was at the top at about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, beyond it, somewhere in there. So, the, the range just within the nine cities is pretty significant. But I'll, uh, email that out to-
Because I just, I just want to make sure that Auburn gets our share, you know, and it's not going somewhere else.
So, we have consensus, sir?
I want to make sure that we get our share and it's accessible to our residents.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So, yes, we have consensus for ordinance resolution?
Coming forward, yes.
Yes.
All right, very good. And last on the agenda is our Vision twenty-fifty update. Councilmember Holman is gonna participate in this one.
Well, for the record, John Holman, Auburn City Council, and joined by Anthony Avery.
Senior Long Range Planner with the Community Development Department, yes.
I'm here not so much because of my, uh, being a, a councilperson, but because of the thirteen years I've had in growth management. Five years with, um, uh, the Washington State Boundary Review Board, and then the better part of eight years here on the council and Puget Sound Regional Council's growth management. What we have coming up before us, um, will be, uh, PSRC's Vision twenty-fifty update. We currently are working under Vision twenty-forty, every ten years it's updated, and, um, it's come at that time to, uh, to do the update. And what we'll be seeking from council is, uh, approval to go forward. Now, Claude DeCoursey, uh, is also, through his work with PSRC's transportation, involved in this, am I correct? So, we've been working both sides of it, the transportation angle, the growth management angle, both contributing to what's going to become Vision, uh, twenty-fifty. Now, all of you are very familiar with how this works because of the length of time you've been on the council. I'm going to get a little remedial here, because next year, we're going to have three or four brand-new council members. They have to know how all this works. Plus, we have people at home that are watching, and they're wondering why we get so involved as council members in, uh, regional committees and such. And there's really quite a simple reason why we're involved regionally. And there's really quite a simple reason why we're involved regionally. It's this. Okay, it's real simple. We get money for roads for Auburn because we play by the rules. Auburn has been extremely successful. So let's go back in history a little bit. We're a very old city, but so is PSRC. PSRC was formed in 56. And in 1956, there was no I-5. The way into Seattle from the south end was on Highway 99 or Military Road. Only two, I-5 did not exist. And the tallest building in Seattle was the Smith Tower. In fact, the Smith Tower was the tallest building west of Mississippi. And that was also the Eisenhower administration. And we had something called highway transportation funding that was going to build the interstate system across the nation. And a problem started occurring. The directors, the state directors of transportation had budgets that were in some cases larger than the states that they were in, became very powerful positions. Well, the electeds in the counties and the cities, they wanted a voice in how those transportation dollars were spent. So the Federal Aid to Highways Act of 1962 gave a voice. They created something called Metropolitan Planning Organization. Well, we already had a Puget Sound Regional Council, four counties, 85 cities, the Port Districts, the Indian Tribes, Department of Commerce, Department of Transportation, Public Health, were already formed in this four-county region. And that became our region's Metropolitan Planning Organization to distribute transportation dollars. PSRC has a requirement that we produce a comprehensive plan based on the Vision 2040. And here's our comp plan. We all spent probably six months working on it, line by line. It was a lot of work. But to qualify for the dollars, you have to have one of these in and approved. We do. The plan is about to evolve into 2050. The next thing that we have to have is a tip. You all have been seeing this tip many times. And my colleague, Mr. Pelosi, has us go through it line by line. So I know the tip. Auburn is incredibly successful in our transportation improvement plan. We put things in here that are five, eight, 10 years down the pike. And when we find grants that fit, we apply for them. Been incredibly successful under Ingrid Gob's guidance on this. We punch well above our weight because we play regionally. It all fits together, comp plan, tip, money for Auburn roads. That's why we're there. Now we go to Puget Sound Regional Council. Additionally, in 1990, the Washington State Legislature passed the Growth Management Act. And it was really the first state in the nation to have a growth management act. And it tries to preserve rural land and leave it in a rural condition for the betterment of lives. We're not 90 miles of strip mall from Snohomish County to Pierce County to Kitsap County with unimpeded growth. We've lit farmlands from here in downtown Auburn. In five minutes' time, we can be in farmland. Well, that adds something to the quality of our life. As my committee on the growth management side, we have been working most of this year on revising 2040 into 2050. I put on your table some, just handouts on what that is, a 30,000-foot look at it. The reality is, for the last year, I've been going through 37 pages of line-by-line changes in language. Pierce County will, and we all have to agree amongst the four counties and 85 cities and six Indian tribes and Department of Commerce, it's pretty unwieldy. I'm sure we're not as well organized as transportation. But it's kind of been a debate over the language on what each one of these requirements that'll go into the Vision 2050, which will be reflected in our comp plan, which will be reflected in the tip, which will be reflected in being eligible for those dollars for roads. And I am not going to go into great detail on the differences. I'm going to leave that for our planner. I've been arguing for the last six months on what verbs we should be using in these 37 pages, line by line. And I would get lost in the trees. I would get lost in the detail of this and who fought for what and why. And we don't need that for this vision. But my partner here at the table is going to summarize that. And so here we are at Vision 2040. We're getting ready to look at Vision 2050.
Can I ask a question? On this little poster here that you have, right here? So if we scan that, what are we looking at?
It takes you to the webpage.
And it has all this information in here?
In fact, you can get all 37 pages, line by line.
That's what I wanted to know because I wanted to see what you have been working on.
Yeah. Recognized tribes, we struck the word Indian. You know, that's the detail level that we've been working at.
Thank you, Councilmember. So as we move from 2040 into 2050, one of the steps that we had to take or that PSRC had to take in order to move into the next stage was to evaluate for environmental impacts. So they went through a CEPA evaluation, determined that a modification from 2040 to 2050 would have environmental impacts. And they developed a supplemental environmental impact statement. That was finalized earlier this year. And we had the opportunity to comment on it. I've included the letter from Mayor Backus and the council to that supplemental environmental impact statement as a part of your packet. And that is the last communication that the council has had effectively or officially to this update. So after the SEIS was complete, the draft of the Vision 2050 started to come to fruition. And one of the things that I really would like to focus on during this session is how the changes kind of evolved from 2040 to 2050. So as the name implies, there's a horizon year, 2040 in the previous case, 2050. So we're looking ahead to 2050. And as a result of the previous 10 years of change that have occurred in our region, we've had to adjust population estimates, jobs estimates, housing needs, transportation demands. We've started to experience an affordable housing crisis. We're also, PSRC has also taken a look at things such as climate change and social equity as they move through the Vision 2050 update. So that draft was prepared on July 19th. And it is currently within the public comment period. So it's been issued out and available for comments from the public, from agencies, member agencies, since the document was prepared and advertised. And that comment period expires on September 16th. So that's next week. Currently, King County and Pierce County are preparing drafts. And we've got those drafts available that we've read and keeping an eye on those. But those are prepared by them. And they're preparing to move those forward, to finalize those within their respective leadership groups. The next steps that PSRC will take, after the comment period closes, they will review comments, make recommendations to the General Assembly, and next year, recommend adoption of Vision 2050 for implementation across the region. I would like to go back real quick to kind of focus on what that exactly means for Auburn. So I went back to this kind of hexagonal page in your packet. And it's, you don't have your individual screens today. So it's a higher-level document that lends itself to decision-making further down the line. And so the county will make planning policies and then the city will ultimately make our comprehensive plan, which leads to our transportation improvement program and so on down the line. So I just want to kind of make sure that that's abundantly clear, that we still have our comprehensive planning program where we iron out some of those details and how everything actually functions and relates to the city of Auburn. Councilmember Holman wanted to share a video. If that's all right, I can put that up on the screen? I don't get your humor yet, I'm brand new. So it's about six minutes long. So I'll go ahead and start this. And it's going to be a little bit of a primer on Vision 2050.
Hello, welcome to this webinar on PSRC's Vision 2050. I'm Paul Ingram, the Director of Growth Management at the Puget Sound Regional Council. And I'm excited to tell you about the draft Vision 2050 plan for the central Puget Sound region and how you can provide your thoughts on the plan.
It's not just a static screen, I promise.
PSRC is the federally designated metropolitan planning organization for the central Puget Sound region. PSRC works with cities, counties, ports, transit agencies, tribes, and others to guide long-range planning in the region. The region includes 82 cities and four counties, from Seattle to small rural towns. Vision 2040 is the current long-range plan for the region that seeks to maintain a strong economy and healthy environment, preserve farms and forests, and focus growth within cities and urban centers. Vision 2040 was adopted in 2008 and is the starting point for Vision 2050. A lot has changed in the last decade. The goal for Vision 2050 is to incorporate new information, capture big changes, and update the policies and actions to reflect where the region wants to go. The region has grown a lot over the last decade. And the forecast shows more continued growth. The region is expected to grow to nearly 6 million people by 2050. In 2050, the region's population will also be older, more diverse, and in smaller households. This reflects long-term trends we've seen in the region. PSRC's Growth Management Policy Board started work on the Vision 2050 plan in 2017. Earlier this year, PSRC released an environmental analysis for the plan. And the draft plan was just released. PSRC's General Assembly is scheduled to adopt the plan in 2020. The draft Vision 2050 plan has been shaped by what we've heard. In public comments and in a large survey of the region, people said they were concerned about rising housing costs, preserving the natural environment, and being a leader on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Issues identified by the public are reflected in the draft and have been a top concern of PSRC's elected leadership working on developing the plan. I'll go into more detail on these themes. The plan includes goals, policies, and actions to guide regional and local planning decisions. The policies are grouped into nine major sections. Action steps identify how PSRC, local governments, and others will implement the plan. The draft plan includes a strategy to focus growth within cities and centers, to support growth near transit and services, and to avoid sprawl. The plan seeks to address housing choice and affordability by including policies and actions to promote more housing throughout the region, especially near transit, jobs, and services, and to create more affordable housing types and choices. The plan seeks to address equity by including policies and actions to commit to equitable outcomes, create and retain living wage jobs throughout the region, and address the risk of displacement. The plan supports growth in centers and near transit, including a goal for 65% of the region's population and 75% of job growth to occur in regional centers and near planned high-capacity transit. The plan seeks to preserve open space and farms by continuing to focus growth in urban areas and by implementing the Regional Open Space Conservation Plan. The plan seeks to keep the region moving by building and maintaining a comprehensive regional transportation system that supports all modes of travel and connects centers with high-capacity transit. The plan also supports exploring new technology and planning for the next decade beyond 2040. The plan seeks to restore Puget Sound and implement the region's four-part greenhouse gas strategy to address climate change. A core part of PSRC is the collaboration that occurs among the region's cities, counties, and agencies. Vision 2050 supports coordination across jurisdiction, agencies, tribes, businesses, and other stakeholders, and supports the local planning work of counties and cities. To make the plan a reality, it will be implemented through several ways, including PSRC data and guidance, local city and county plans, regional transportation funding, and other regional actions. Local governments implement Vision 2050 through their individual conference of plans and local projects. PSRC wants to hear your feedback during the 60-day public comment period, which ends September 16th. The Growth Management Policy Board is holding a public hearing at their September 5th meeting. The board will review comments this fall. An adoption of Vision 2050 is planned for the spring of 2020. Please share your thoughts on Vision 2050. Visit psrc.org/vision. And attend an event, explore the online open house, or read more on the PSRC blog.
For sure, yes.
Well, go ahead and then I'll ask my question when you're done.
I would like to just point out that on the electronic version of this, I went ahead and hyperlink to the draft Vision 2050 to this so that way it's easily accessible if you've got that document. And then this is hyperlinked as well. So you can go ahead and copy the video URL and paste it to go review that on your own time.
Since the time that you have started doing this and you've had hearings and stuff, what's the response you've been getting?
I'm not actually with PSRC.
He's with Auburn.
Okay, Mr. Holman?
We've been getting a lot. We took an hour's worth of testimony last Thursday from the public. And the end of public statement can all be sent in writing now. So we, in our next meeting, next, the first Thursday of next month, will review what's come in since then and make any final adjustments.
So you don't know if it's, can I continue? So you don't know if it's positive or negative or? or?
Most of it's very positive. The negative we get is that we're not being forceful enough, especially in areas of climate change. There are quite a few climate activists that want us to be...
More conservative?
More aggressive.
More aggressive in achieving climate change. And again, four counties, 85 cities, six Indian tribes, and a whole bunch of different organizations known by initials.
It'd be kind of nice if we get a revision of what you, the positive feedback and everything that we're hearing.
It's all available online because they, it's published. It's out there in the open.
Yeah, all the SEIS, for example, all the supplemental environmental impact statement public comments are available within that document. And I'm not 100% sure how they're running it, but PSRC will be required to make all of the public comments associated with this draft Vision 2050 available for review by the public. So that's, it's all going to be above board, transparent for everybody to take a look at.
But the ask that I would like to do today is Claude and I, when we're at our PSRC meetings, what we have to do is speak as an individual from Auburn. We can't speak as the council. What I'm hoping is, at one of our next regular council meetings, that we can have a resolution that we support Vision 2050, so that Claude and I, in our meetings, can say, "The city of Auburn supports Vision 2050." And that's the ask that we're putting in tonight, is that sometime in the near future, when you've had a time to review Vision 2050 and the changes and the public comments, that we can get that nod. Does that kind of sum it up?
Do you have a consensus, everybody?
Well, you know, once again, we're being asked to look to the future. And, you know, just like we talked about earlier tonight with the master plan and the needs assessment, this is what we're doing as a region. And I just want to express my appreciation to my fellow council members that are doing this work, which I know is very exciting to go downtown and participate in these meetings.
Not all the time.
I appreciate you doing the work. We've all done it. And that's why I said that this is a little bit of remedial for those of us who've been doing it. But three or four of us will be gone next year. There'll be new people carrying on. Plus, the public needs to know the complexities of how these agreements are made on a regional basis.
If anybody ever goes on to PSRC for a meeting, let's take Anthony, who's an excellent driver to bring you down here. He's got the best roots going down and the best roots coming home.
I worked out in the neighborhood, so. I take the sounder in. Yeah, well, you get to. So I appreciate that.
You're a man. I'm a woman. I don't like walking in that area, so I'd rather drive.
You rode the sounder with me once.
Yeah, but I was with you, right?
A lot of good I could do.
Let's wrap this up. Anthony, can you give us a little briefing on your city and what you do?
Yes. So my position within the city of Auburn is to focus on long-range problem solutions and, I mean, exactly kind of what we're talking about here, looking forward. So I participated with Councilman De Corsi at the Affordable Housing Commission, Committee? Committee? AHC. I've gotten used to the acronyms already. Everything else is gone. And so coordinating with Director Tate on some of the affordable housing and housing policy updates that we're making. I'll also be coordinating with all the other groups within the city to, as we start to move forward into the next comprehensive plan update, and pretty much anything that we need, three to 40 years of foresight to be doing, and even policy decisions or policy writing, ordinance changes, those sorts of things, I'll be involved in much of that. So I expect to be seeing you all a lot until the three or four of you are gone.
How many weeks now?
I've been here for seven weeks now, so. So I'm enjoying the fire. I love it.
And he commutes to Auburn on the sounder.
I do. I live in West Seattle.
Again, you guys are male.
Councilmember De Corsi, for record keeping, can you summarize what was decided on consensus?
Councilman Holman has recommended to bring a resolution forward to council, and council has a consensus that we would like to see the resolution.
I'd also like to see the plan in hard copy with all the responses.
I'll hand it to you.
Okay, that's the whole entire thing?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
All 37 pages.
Yes. Great. Perfect.
Any other questions, comments?
And there was consensus on that?
Yes.
Yes, there was consensus, yes. Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Holman. Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll turn the meeting back over to Deputy Mayor.
Okay. Item five, any other discussion items from the council? Seeing them. Any new business items from the council?
Yes.
No, 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 no. For the matrix. Don't mind. I'll wait for the matrix.
No new business. The matrix. If you all look at the matrix, we have item one, that's in October. Item three, still TBD. Item four is ongoing. Item five is 10-14.
Just a question there, Deputy Mayor. You have, the item one is scheduled for 10-14 as well as item five, so it seems to be two different categories on the same day.
Well, that's all right. Yeah, yeah, that's...
It'll be under the general discussion.
Okay. Yep. Item six, I asked at the last meeting to put in the, change the title, add 2019 fireworks update, so we don't lose track of what year we're talking about. Now, Chief Pearson, we had suggested at our last meeting that we could bring this back on October the 28th study session. Have you had any concurrence with the mayor on that yet?
I talked with her this morning, and we're still working on a date. I can't concretely say where we're going to go with that, but...
Fair enough. Okay, good. Thank you.
We're going to do what we can to get your info.
Now, council, are there any other items that you want to add? Yes?
On domestic violence, October is awareness, and I would like to bring an event that's going to be taken, we're going to be doing on October 14th. So I would like to see if we could bring that on October, no, what day is, October 19th. But I wanted to bring this awareness to council on the 14th, October 14th.
I'd like her item expanded to include all the other activities, a summary from our human services, on other supportive activities that they're doing in relationship to domestic violence.
Okay.
And domestic violence, Yolanda, that would go under?
Green. That go, community wellness.
Green?
Yeah.
Green?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm not clear on what you're asking for on the 14th.
I'll give you a follow-up on that, if you want.
I'm not sure that we had consensus on that.
So we want to make sure that we captured all of your and...
Cities.
The cities.
So I've got down here domestic violence. Do you want to put domestic violence month or?
Awareness.
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 Yeah. On October 14th.
And that'll be, yeah, and that'll be trout manual and De Corsi.
Do it.
Yeah, yeah. So does everybody agree with that? We can proceed, add that on. Okay. Is there anything else? Is there anything else that we want to add or delete? All right.
I'm sorry. You had asked for there to be an item earlier, but there was no discussion about it for the...
What item?
Fireworks.
No, no, no. I'm going to give you something, and what it is, just changing the title.
No, I'm sorry. You had asked for the Director Thomas to bring back an item on animal control, and so that needs to be part of this.
Oh, a board briefing. Animal Control Board Briefing. And I'll add this to this item.
Can I support that presentation, too?
No, that was on, that was on something else.
The cops, we want the Humane Society.
Anything else?
Different than animal control.
Yeah.
Anything else, you guys?
Sorry, Deputy Mayor, did we get consensus on the AVHS?
Say what?
Did we get consensus on the addition of the AVHS discussion that you just?
He's got a question.
Animal clarity. We just had a presentation last month, month before, on animal control. When we had the two animal control, you're asking about the Humane Society.
Yeah.
So the language would be an update on Valley Humane Society, whatever the AVHS.
You're right, John. You're right.
So that I would consent and think would be a good thing. We haven't heard from them in a while.
No, you know, they've got an operation on the, their store. So we haven't heard anything on that recently. Okay, so the consensus is add Valley Humane Society briefing and domestic violence awareness. Is that agreeable with everybody?
Very much.
Anything else? Okay, if not, we're adjourned.
Well done.
John, I want...